All right, I should have asked you this before, Michelle. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for not asking that. All right, it is 9:30, the 10th day of September. Monday morning, we'll bring the regular session of Commissioners, Somerville County Commissioners' Court to order. As the record shows, Larry Halsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Cramp are all present. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all may be seated if you like. Larry, would you say a prayer for the court, please?
Dear me, Father, we thank you for this day you give us. Father, we thank you for the rain that we received. We pray, Father, we show love and consideration and wisdom on this court. May your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Larry. All right, item number three, approve minutes of previous Commissioners' Courts.
We had a slew of them. August 13th.
September 10th.
August 2 on August the 20th, August 27th, 2 on August 27th, and September the 5th. I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Say thank you. Have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Item number four, I saw Donald in the hallway. Where is Donald? There you go. Come on in, Donald. Presentation, Extension Office update. Will you make sure your little red light's on there and bring your microphone?
You bet, you bet. Thanks, Judge. As Judge said, my name's Donald Kellm. I'm the District Extension Administrator for Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service here in District 8, which Somerville County is, one of my counties, the 21 counties that I supervise in or look out over in District 8. Today is my annual visit with you to, on behalf of Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service, to be able to let you know how much we appreciate the support for the extension program in Somerville County. Without that support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do here in the county. And to start off with, we'll have, just like we've done in the past, except Zach being gone, we'll bring up our 4-H members that are here today to talk. But first, I would like to read a proclamation for the Somerville County Commissioners' Court in support of National 4-H Week, which is October 7th through the 13th. So with that being said, whereas the Somerville County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service for 111 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, help young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from 8 to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build a character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Somerville County Commissioners' Court hereby designates October 7th through the 13th, 2018, as National 4-H Week in Texas and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service and the many, many men and women who have made the program a success.
And I have item number five to discuss action and declaring that proclamation. So I'll let y'all finish and then we'll do that.
Good deal. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to, let them, Margaret, and let her introduce the kids and they'll give their report on the 4-H program.
I'm going to give it to them.
Thank you, Donald.
Good morning, how are y'all?
Good.
I'm Margaret Alexander, the Glen Rose 4-H General Club Manager, and I've got some kids here today. We've got Winston, Peyton, Hunter, and Jackson here to just represent 4-H for us. I just want to tell you that we appreciate all that you do for our county and for our kids and give you a few numbers on what these kids are doing. So all of these kids are participating in livestock shows, they're participating in 4-H contests, shooting sports. Some of these kids are going to major stock shows, Houston livestock shows, participating in Clover Boot Camps. We had several kids participate in that and we've also had our shooting sports events this fall. Also, we are heading up our sheep and goat jackpot this coming weekend. We'd invite y'all out to come and support the youth in Somerville County and watch these kids show some of their animals. And with that said, these guys have some cookies to present to you. Go ahead. Y'all can eat on them all day long.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Again, we appreciate everything that y'all do for us.
Thank you all.
Hi, guys. Good job.
Thank you all very much.
Y'all have anything to say? Say thank you.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you all.
I don't know how many of y'all have been a part of the 4-H program here recently, but the membership has greatly increased over the last couple of years and it's a very active program with a very active adult participation in that program. And really would like to see that continue as we go forward. And I thank everybody and all the parents and the efforts they put forth in supporting the kids.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Don?
Yeah, if you will, as you know, I always bring my newsletter on my annual visits. Again, I'll sound like a tape recording, but this program wouldn't be what it is, just like Commissioner Curtis said, it would not be what it is if it weren't for that support, that partnership between Extension and the Somerville County Commissioners' Court. On the front of my newsletter, I always highlight something that is going on across all 21 counties in District 8. You can see on the front, I wanted to highlight 4-H this year. We've done FCH, we've done Ag, and again, it's in that rotation back around 4-H program. Last year, you know, in the scholarship part of it, each year at State 4-H Roundup in June, 4-H Foundation Award Scholarships. In 2017, we brought back 29 scholarships for $285,000 back to District 8. This year in June 2018, we had 32, 33 scholarships and brought, no, we had 29 scholarships and brought back $325,000 worth of scholarships in District 8. That's what these young people are working towards, is hopefully in the future be a recipient of one of those 4-H Foundation scholarships. What your support of the 4-H program here in the county, it allows them to do what they need to do to build that resume for the future, to be competitive for those scholarships. Again, the leaders like Margaret and the others, the archery, the shooting sports leaders here in the county, along with Zach's work that he had done since we hired him to come in here, has, as Commissioner Curtis said, taken that 4-H enrollment up to a really good number, higher than it had been prior to Zach coming. But you can look at some of the district numbers and so forth. The most important information that I want to focus on today, just for a minute, is on the back, is specific to Somerville County. If you will look at, it kind of highlights a snapshot of some of the Ag and Natural Resource Programming that Zach was involved in, the District 8 Farm and Ranch Seminar that's done each year in December, providing the continuing education units for those individuals with private applicator's license, pesticide license. You can see the 40 producers attended, the different topics, the Central Texas Beef Cattle Meeting that was held, that is a joint program between Hood, Johnson, Somerville, and Boski County, the Cross Timbers Brush Symposium, and then the research plots that Zach put out, the demonstrations, continue to be an educational tool to help educate producers. And he had two, a couple of them going on, utilizing research plots on prickly pear control and some other plots available to work on. Family Consumer Science, Family Community Health, you can see they had Walk Across Texas Program that they did here in the county with a lot of help from Jenna, and you can see the different teams, the number of miles they walk. And the Walk Across Texas Program is just a health and wellness program focusing on weight management and exercise and so forth. 4-H Youth Development Program, you can see 140 members last year, 31 screen volunteers, the number participated in the youth fair, 58 members with 99 projects, the annual jackpot show that Margaret was talking about last year, 192 entries, and it's coming up this weekend. The number of projects shown at the different major livestock shows, the 4-H District Contest, the district numbers are on the front. Here are some specific participation, with 13 participants at the District Food Show and Food Challenge, that you can see what the different members participated in the record books and the roundup, district roundup, quiz bowls, and so forth. And then a recruitment tool was the Clover Kid Boot Camp. You can see the number that participated there. And then the shooting sports, whether it be archery, shotgun, or, yeah, the shotgun group, you can see the number participated there. Again, none of this would be possible if it weren't for your support, and I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate that support that you provide, the Extension Program here in the county, and the relationship that we have had, and I say "we" on a selfish note, that I've been able to have with the court members here in Somerville County. Also, Troya will be sending out, my office manager, a hold-a-date. Wednesday, November the 7th is my annual Judge and Commissioners' Conference in Waco. And again, the program will be good, but the meal will be even better. So.
For those who may or may not know, Zach Davis has taken a different job up in the Denton area, and we are working with Dr. Kellm to fill that position, and hopefully we'll do that quickly.
I've interviewed this afternoon, and what we'll do probably, even though we have some internal applicants, it's not quite, not a negative, but they don't have the years of experience that Zach had when he came. So what I will probably do is a first-step program with them. The first 30 days of employment, more than likely, they will work with the E-RH County staff, and Extension will pay their salary and travel and so forth, and then I'll, and then after 28, 30 days, then they'll start here in Somerville County. But they'll be right close to where if we need to come over and help with the validation. But I told Zach before he left that he was going to commit to come back for me. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. All right, item number five, we will adopt this proclamation that Don just read. Do I have a motion to adopt this?
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against.
You got it.
If you don't mind, if you just pass that down, sign it, we'll put out a copy of it.
Got it.
Good.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Appreciate it, Don.
Thanks, Judge. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
You'll just get that to Jenna when y'all are over.
All right. Michelle will file it and stamp it, and then we'll get her a copy of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. All right, item number six, presentation and proclamation by food bank representatives supporting Hunger Action Month. You must be the gentleman.
Yes, sir.
I don't know your name, but you're welcome. Come on over here with a microphone. Do you have a copy of the proclamation?
I do.
Okay, great.
All in the master hands of an iPhone.
There you go.
Judge Commissioners, thank you very much. I'm Nate Starmer, and I'm here on behalf of Tarrant Area Food Bank. We are the local food bank that supplies 13 counties in north-central Texas with food, up to 33 million pounds of food a year, actually, and we push out about 2 million meals every month. And so we would like to thank the Commissioners' Court for having us here today to bring some awareness to Hunger Action Month. Whereas one in every six people in North Texas struggle with hunger and food insecurity, including one in every four children. And whereas 13% of American households and 17% of American households with children do not consistently have food, nutritious food, and do not have access to food. Whereas children from families struggling with hunger may be more likely to repeat a grade in elementary school, experience developmental impairments in areas like language and motor skills, and have more social and behavioral problems. And whereas partner agencies in Somerville County are distributing food by Tarrant Area Food Bank, which provides more than 2 million meals over 47,000 households in 13 Texas counties monthly. And whereas, part, I'm sorry, whereas the month of September has been designated as Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to the reality of food insecurity and promote ways for individuals to get involved in the movement to end hunger, including volunteering, hosting food drives, both in-person and the newest ones are virtual, and donating foods. Now therefore, be it resolved that we ask a proclamation to be set on declaring the month of September to be Hunger Action Month, and thank the Commissioners' Court for working with the Tarrant Area Food Bank in their fight against hunger.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions at all? Well, do we have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion for the proclamation? Five, four, zero against. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thanks for the work also. If y'all don't mind signing that, passing that down, Michelle can stamp it. All right, item number seven, presentation by concerned citizens of the county, and we'll go over all the ground rules again, which I'm sure we probably don't have to, but we'll be respectful of each other while we're going through this process. I was notified that there would be five people speaking. Is that correct? They said, well, I'm sorry, four. No, five. Tanya, they said you wanted like a minute, minute and a half up front, and a minute, minute and a half in the end to get your three minutes. Ralph Hawkins, I don't, there he is, right there on the end. Rick Clark, he's right behind him. Judy Johnson, right there beside you, and Warren Lewis.
He's not here, but we're wondering if the owner of the press release could speak on this thing.
All right, we can substitute him. If you can just give me his name, we get to that point, and then we go back to you at the very end, right, Tanya? For a minute, minute and a half. All right, well, if you want to go up to the, I'll wait and start until you start.
I'm wondering if I could give handouts to the Commissioners before I start.
You bet. And that's probably the other thing I need to mention, not that we have any animosity going on here, but do remember that you're making your presentation to the court, and the court is not on the agenda to take action, so we won't discuss it or take action, but we'll take it all under advisement, so we don't hopefully direct anything to anybody that's in the crowd.
My name is Tanya Fonseca. I live at 1123 County Road 2001. I grew up here in Somerville County. I've owned businesses here. I've had a seat on the planning and zoning board for the city. I even finished the walls in this courtroom. I'm here today because I care very much about the positive growth of our city and county. I'm one of many concerned residents that have formed a coalition called SCRAM. Our mission is to work to protect Somerville County citizens' quality of life, health, safety, and property values from the adverse effects of the operation of surface mining companies. I would like to emphasize that our coalition was not created to attack anyone's personal property rights. Our goal is to achieve cooperation and support from our elected officials to protect all the citizens in our county by asking our officials to fully utilize the authority granted to them by the state of Texas. The following speakers will be giving areas of immediate concern. First is Ralph Hawkins.
All right, so you did great, one minute. You almost had that time, didn't you? All right, Ralph, how you doing today?
I'm good. I have a handout as well. I had to shorten this one to get within the three minutes, so.
Cool.
It's edited. Good morning. I'm Ralph Hawkins, and my farm and house are located on 1123 County Road 401 in Somerville County. My purpose here is to appear before this court in objection to the surface mine proposed on M&amp;W Ranch. The city of Glen Rose was purposely not notified, although part of the ETJ extends into the M&amp;W Ranch, but whose Ingram Concrete lease avoided that segment of the M&amp;W Ranch to avoid city input. My specific reason today is to address the proposed truck traffic. The taxpayers who built and maintain these roads through our tax dollars need your help and support on these actions that I will address shortly. I'm not going to review my last presentation last month, but I did want to highlight again, as of yesterday, the 24/7 operation has not been changed in the application. The trucks that we're talking about on our roads will weigh 40 tons and more. Our county roads load restrictions right now are estimated at 24 tons with the state Highway 200 in just over 27 tons. So proper permitting must be enforced for these very heavy, large trucks. After reviewing your authority, the County Commissioners' Court, according to the Texas Transportation Code statutes, one, establish weight limits on roads and bridges and appoint a county traffic officer to enforce weight limits. Two, establish maximum weights on county roads and bridges. Three, issue overweight permits and require a bond for damages. Four, utilize sheriff deputies, constables, et cetera, to enforce road weight restrictions. Five, designate above-county employee as weight enforcement officer. Further, County Commissioners' Court has authority also to monitor public nuisance for dust, light, and sound pollution. Somerville County resources already appear to be in motion to clear overhead trees for truck traffic and intersection improvements. We need your help now. Our formal request to you this morning regarding traffic is for the County Commissioners to make a motion and pass the following countywide restrictions. Load restrictions marked on county roads 401, 410, 415, and 416, and any other county roads under the stated above statutes that relate to these mining operations, and a 25 mile per hour speed limit. Require altering, number two, require altering of TCEQ application or pass a resolution limiting the hours and days of operation to Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Three, provide weight restrictions testing equipment to our county sheriff and constables. Four, ensure the citizens, if this mining operation moves forward, that a bond is in place to pay for damages caused by excessive truck and vehicle traffic. Five, provide monitoring equipment for nuisance of dust, light, and sound pollution. Six, monitor water usage, both at the mining site and the involved county roads, to reduce dust and ensure road maintenance. We're asking you this morning, as our representatives, you're our only hope, to support us and act on this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. You did have that time down to the limit, didn't you? You hit that on the head. All right, I believe the next one is Rick Clark. How you doing, Rick?
Good morning to everybody. And I'm doing well. Great day to be alive. The coalition has developed and kind of segmented itself into research and exploring different avenues. I spent the past month looking at the whole state of Texas. What are other counties doing about this? What problems are they having? How have they reacted to it? There's a big coalition up in the Panhandle, there's one down in the Big Bend area. I talked to Judge Darrell Fowler in DeWitt County, which is in Cuero. They have a five-county coalition. They started it in '08, '09. They were having trucking issues with oil and gas. Not the same, but similar situations. Their roads were being destroyed, their citizens were being subjected to numerous issues with tractor-trailers up and down the highway. Their successes, they've had a Senate bill, 1747, passed, which set aside $200 million for the state for this issue. Obviously, in 10 years, that money's gone. It hasn't been refunded. But there is action that can be taken if we work together doing this. They have a lobbyist on their payroll. Between five counties, they pay him $90,000 a year for their interest to support. Talked to the judge for 45 minutes. He's like he's my new best friend. So they're very open, very willing to talk to all of us. He said, give him a call. And I have handouts, but I've, been my observation over the years, you give a handout out before you start talking, nobody listens to you. So mine's coming afterwards. The main thing he said was to get involved. And it's my opinion, as a county that's just getting started in this, we can learn a whole lot from people that have already been doing it. My work philosophy is don't reinvent the wheel. If someone's already doing it, learn from them. So we can go out there, solicit information, bring it back, and redevelop it if we need to. He's very open to the fact of this county joining their coalition. That's something you all will have to discuss, but it's an open possibility and an open invitation from them. Two, the 31st, I believe it was a Friday afternoon.
You have three minutes, Rick, so.
All right, I'll say it very quickly.
There you go. Thank you.
Fort Worth has a TCEQ office. I called them at 12:00, 12:15 on that afternoon. At 3:30, a gentleman was sitting in my driveway. He had already been on M&amp;W Ranch, he had taken pictures, he had looked around, there was nobody there. What we were hearing just at that time happened to be tractors and hay cutting and baling equipment. But when you're half a mile away and you can't see it, it all sounds about the same. It was a lot of noise going on that day.
Three and a half minutes, Rick.
All right. He's very open also. We're here to solicit your help. There's lots to be done, and it sure isn't just about M&amp;W. The whole county is subject to something happening to them over this, whether it's air, transportation, or whatever.
Did you want to give your handouts?
Well, why not? And since we won't be here tomorrow, tomorrow's 9/11, we should never forget what happened on that day.
Thank you, Rick. Judy Johnson.
Good morning. I'm Judy Johnson, and I would like to read this following letter from a Rainbow resident and M&amp;W Ranch neighbor. To whom it may concern, my name is Shara Crussera, and I live on County Road 312, across the river from the M&amp;W Ranch, less than a half a mile as the crow flies. I am an environmental hydrogeologist and soil conservationist for the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and a graduate student and lab instructor at Texas- Conservation Service and a graduate student and lab instructor at Texas Christian University. I have many concerns about the number of sand and gravel mining facilities within our small county. While Somerville is the second smallest county in Texas, it is the first in mining facilities per capita. As a certified GIS analyst, I have mapped the mining facilities in Somerville County. More than 60, 300 actively mined acres, 2,200 inactive mined acres, and more than 880 acres which are aggressively being pursued are newly leased equating to approximately 9,400 acres, or 14 square miles of mining occurring in this county. Of the more than 20 miles of Brazos River frontage in Somerville, approximately 62% of that is home to a mining facility. Sand and gravel mining and rock crushing emits particulate matter, which is regulated in Texas by the TCEQ. There are two types of concern: coarse particulate matter, which has an aerodynamic diameter of less than 10 microns, and fine particulate matter, which has an aerodynamic diameter of less than 2.5 microns. Fine matter can penetrate the nasal cavity to reach the tiny gas exchange vehicles of the lungs, the epiola. What this means is that these small particulates can reach the lungs and escape into the bloodstream, and the smaller the particle is, the longer it can stay deeper in the deeper cavities of the lungs. Sand and gravel mining produces crystalline silica dust, and while some of it may be mitigated, fugitive dust emission is still created from sand blown from the mining sites. Crystalline silica is known to be a human carcinogen, but is also associated with other human health issues, such as decreased lung function, aggravated asthma, the irritation of airways, coughing, difficulty of breathing, renal failure, and silicosis.
You have your three minutes, Ms. Johnson.
I have just a couple of quick things.
All right.
A 2014 report on carcinogens by the National Institute of Health reported that silica dust is a byproduct of sand and gravel mining and acknowledged that residents near quarries and sand and gravel operations potentially are exposed to respiratable crystalline silica. And if you'll look on your handout, see paragraph five before you. This paragraph gives details of the air quality impacts from the dust, which comes from stockpiles and truck hauling. Mitigation for road emissions may be accomplished by road watering, paving roads, but neither eliminate emissions. Subsequently, watering trucks holding approximately 15,000 gallons of water to ensure lower emissions, particularly during dry months, these trucks would need to run eight to 12 times per day.
Are you at the end, Ms. Johnson?
Just a very little bit.
All right. Little bit more.
Thank you. Since the new facility intends to utilize groundwater, the county can see reductions to groundwater between 120 to 180 gallons per day. Estimates do not include the 15% of new water the company states it will utilize in processing material, and since all of the water will initially be new water, it is increasingly important to surrounding neighbors and city of Glen Rose to consider the rates for the Trinity and Trinity Edwards aquifers to between 1/10 to 2 inches per year. That is a concern of ours, that our water tables will be diminished. And this isn't just with M&amp;W. This is with all of the mining facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it. All right, Tony, did you say that the owner, did you want to get the owner of Fossil Rim?
Yes.
Oh, Trace Rios?
Yeah. Trace Rios.
Good morning.
How you doing this morning?
I'm well, thank you. My name is Ben Carr. I'm the vice president of operations for Ocean Canyon Property, which is the company that owns and operates Trace Rios RV Resort, which is located directly across the Brazos from the proposed Ingram Mine and Rock Crushing operation. I had the opportunity to speak to this commissioners' court last month to express our opposition to the mining and crushing operation and its expected negative impact on our business and on the county, and I welcome the opportunity to come back again today. This morning, I would like to express our appreciation to this court for formally acknowledging the concerns of the citizens and business owners of this county and recognizing that this issue is in need of further investigation and discussion. As our company has continued to explore the potential of sharing this county with yet another mining operation, we remain resolute in our concern as to the adverse impact that such a mining and crushing operation will have, not just on our tourism-based business, but on the county and citizens as a whole. We are strongly of the opinion that the proposed addition of a business whose expected operation has obviously ignited a firestorm of opposition must be at best stopped or at least controlled for the betterment of all the parties involved. Issues such as noise pollution, light pollution, hours of operation, traffic impact, and so on have certainly not been addressed, at least to the satisfaction of many of the good people who are here or to the satisfaction of our company. So to this end, we remain vigorously opposed to the startup of the Ingram operation until these questions have been answered. Our company's hope is that this court, based upon the comments heard from the citizens this morning, will consider adopting a formal resolution that opposes the application of the Ingram operation and authorizes the county judge and the staff to submit to the TCEQ a formal request for a contested hearing on behalf of the citizens. I appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Appreciate it. Back to you, Tony.
We have started an informal petition that, of concern county citizens, that I would like to get to. And I guess what I want to conclude this with is that what we are very specifically asking the court today is for a town hall work meeting that won't limit the number of speakers or overall time allowed on the topic. We would like for it to be held in the evening in a larger venue like maybe the Somerville Citizens Center would be a good location for it, and we prefer it to be held within the next two weeks as we feel a sense of urgency about this issue. At the town hall meeting, we are asking the commissioners' court to give their solutions to the following requests. I've got all of these itemized, their requests that Ralph Hawkins talked about. I'll be happy to give these to you rather than go back over them again and cut into more time. But, you know, the first one is we would like for you to request the installation of a permanent air quality monitor by TCEQ to be installed in our county. The closest one is 48 miles away. It's ancient, and we need one in this county because, you know, being the second smallest county in the state of Texas, we have the most per capita mining facilities here, and we have got to step up and do something about it and push our government to help us. In conclusion, I would like to read something that was written by the chief marketing officer of Fossil Rim, Warren Lewis. "The reality of the surface mining in Somerville County is this: The continued mining is going to cost us roads, noise, air, water, tourism, wildlife, safety of our people, et cetera. The list is long, with absolutely no benefit to our county or city at all. Tourism in our town contributes to our economy. Mining does not. Mining is not economic development." I think there are two questions that you need to ask yourself. The first is this: How is surface mining good for Glen Rose and Somerville County? And secondly, and more importantly, do you want Glen Rose to be known as the beautiful tourist town that it currently is with the revenue and recognition that we receive from that, or do you want Glen Rose to be known as a mining town? The problem is real, and it's urgent, and we are asking you to please help us help our city and county. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Do you have that list? I have to give John Curtis credit for this, what he came to me Friday evening and discussed. He said, "Maybe on this workshop that we set up, maybe we ought to have a representative from TCEQ there, a representative from TAC, which is, you know, the Association of Counties, a representative from Waits and Measures, a representative from TechDOT, and then Jim Allison is the group that represents us out of Austin, attorneys that represent the judges and commissioners, maybe have a representative from them." I don't know. I'll probably have to go through CAFER and some of that bunch to try to get this set up. I don't know if I can do that within a two-week period, but what John was saying, I'm not speaking for John, is saying, "Maybe if we have these representatives from these different groups, maybe we could get a better education and a better understanding in maybe what can and cannot be done." Is that amenable? All right. And then I'd have to get with Pam Baker to see if we could actually use the, you know, the senior center whenever we get that. So I'll start making phone calls, see who I can get to come and just educate us all and tell us what we can and can't do legally and things like that. Okay? And hey, I appreciate it. Thank you all. All right. Item number eight. Hang on just one second. Let me find my paperwork. Discuss take action on warning Lot 3, Block 4A, and Lot 4, Block 4A in Gibbs Industrial Park. I don't know if y'all remember. Maybe I'll wait just a couple of minutes here, a couple of seconds. How you doing, Andy?
I'm good.
Great. You should have a good weekend. Glad to have you with us this morning, Andy.
I'm glad I get it, all right.
We thought you... That chair's been empty too long. We thought you were only doing it during these meetings.
Helpful, eh? You look great.
Yeah. All right. But back to item number eight. Discuss take action on warning Lot 3, Block 4A, and Lot 4, Block 4A in Gibbs Industrial Park. If you remember back in July...
Thank you.
We discussed this in depth back in July. We went in executive session, discussed it with Little Tigers, which is Megan and Tad Oats. We wanted to wait a 60-day period for the other one we had awarded down there in that addition. So do we have any questions this morning for Megan or Tad, or any group that works with Megan or Tad, Little Tigers? If we don't have any questions, do we have a motion to award these two lots to Little
Everything's in order that we discussed.
Yes, yes. And then they would just have to get the proper address and name and everything that you want on the paperwork, if they vote to do so, to Mr. Lucas, and then give him about seven to 10 days to actually do the paperwork, and then we'll get ahold of you if they vote to do so. And then you go down to the clerk's office and file it, and it's usually around $37 to $50, somewhere in that ballpark. So, that being said, do we have a motion to award this?
Yes.
I have a motion from Larry to award Lot 3, Block 4A, and Lot 4, Block 4A in Gibbs Industrial Park to Little Tigers. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All right. I have a second from Kenneth. Do we have any further questions or discussion?
I think in the previous meetings there was, we did not want to put ourselves in a position of competitive businesses, and it's not our role to call businesses from our county. And y'all welcome competition, both parties, and so I see no reason not to proceed forth with this.
I have motion by Larry and a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Like I said, Megan, if you're a tab, we'll get the exact address and name that you want on the paperwork, who you want to be having the D name put in, and get that to Mr. Lucas in seven, 10 days. Is that good enough?
That'll be fine.
You know, we'll get with him, we'll get it filed. Thank you all. All right. Discuss take action on granting an easement for Lot 4 on Gibbs Boulevard in Glen Rose. Bear with me, I've got pictures here. That's usually not a good thing.
You're throwing things around.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I just, I made copies so every commissioner could have one. This piece of property lies, which I didn't even know the county owned, lies beside Hop Falls Pantry. It doesn't lie within the industrial park. It doesn't lie within the city limits. It's straight across from the jail where they've got that easement for AT&amp;T. Well, no, it's Windstream Communications. Don and Donnie Gill have asked for, they'll pay for the survey, they'll pay for the improvements, they'll pay for everything dealing with the easement through there, they want to develop that piece of property down there in commercial buildings. I talked to Andy about this. Do you understand any reason why not to, correct? So, any questions I might can try to answer?
What are you asking?
We will need to have a motion to grant them an easement through this piece of property right there, and then they'll have a surveyor come out and survey and dedicate it, and we'll have to bring it back to the court and have them vote on it. But first, we got to decide if y'all want to grant an easement through there.
You're talking about a 30-foot easement?
Yes.
That's what this is here?
Oh, well, no, that's the easement that's already given to Windstream.
All right, so we're talking about another easement just like this?
Yes, yes. It'll be right in between that and the property line.
We're talking about an easement, not giving them...
No, we're not giving them property. We're just granting them an easement.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Larry to proceed forward.
Second.
I have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Once they get the survey completed, I'll bring it back to Andy. He approves it, and I'll bring it back to the court.
I would suggest that the easement be in conjunction with the other easement so that you don't...
Encroach?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, get out there away from...
So make it 60-foot wide, still 30?
No. Well, just put it here. It says, "Well, you got an easement there. Put it right there so that..."
Move off that easement just enough and give it 60-foot. And then that still gets plenty of land between, because there's 334 feet across there. All right. Just the...
Yes.
That's their parking lot. They sit like right there where their driveway is on the side, and that's where the city limits comes, right there. Didn't even know we owned that piece of property until the other day. All right. Item number 10. Discuss take action on contract between Somerville County Juvenile Probation Department and Denton County Juvenile Probation Department. Is Heather with us here today? These are what we do each year in case we have problems. I imagine Andy reviewed these. I'm not speaking for you, Andy.
I reviewed all these. These are annual agreements we enter into for potential placements of our juvenile defendants. Heather has shared all these agreements with me, and I've made the necessary changes, so they should all be good.
So do I have a motion to enter into the agreement with Probation Department and Denton County Juvenile Probation Department?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John. Any further questions for Andy? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item number 11 is also along the same lines. Discuss take action on contract between Somerville County and Linda Bailey LPC-LSOTP. You'll have to help me on that one. Same thing?
She's a, if I can remember this, she's our sex offender counselor.
And this is a renewal up in East Town. I mean, these are already people that we already do business with?
That's correct. So she's actually working on a case we have presently, and I believe she's going to be doing our sex offender counseling.
All right. Do I have a motion to renew this contract?
Are there terms and conditions of the contract?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I have a motion that we approve the contract with juvenile service contract with Linda Bailey.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item number 12 is a separate contract between Somerville County Ju... Item number 12 is a separate contract between Somerville County Juvenile Board and Rite of Passage Incorporated. I believe this is one I know that we've done every year since I've been here, Rite of Passage. It's this facility in case we have to have a place to house juveniles.
Make a motion that we approve the Rite of Passage contract?
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Michelle, you're probably, give me a few minutes to dig through these contracts, get them signed at the end, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I'll get them in your pile. All right. Item 13. Discuss take action on approval of 2019 Somerville County Commissioner's Court dates. It was in the packet, hopefully he's one you had a chance to review them. Do we have any questions or comments on Commissioner's County Court dates?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to accept the county court dates as presented.
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further discussion? You probably noticed, I think, two of them will be on Tuesday since there's a holiday on Mondays. Anyhow, anyone, everyone in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item number 14. Discuss take action on approval of 2019 Somerville County misdemeanor court dates, which always fall on Friday unless it's a holiday.
I'll make a motion to approve the court date.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Andy or myself? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item number 15. Discuss take action on approval of 2019 Somerville County holidays. Probably had a chance to review them.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 holiday as presented.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion on the holidays? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item number 16. Discuss take action on approving the notice of general election for November 6, 2018. I believe that's you, Kristy.
I have come to request approval for the notice of the general election from Commissioners' Court. Election day is going to be held on November 6 from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. with all four precincts voting at the Expo Center this year, and as well as early voting beginning on October 22nd, running through Friday, November 2nd from 8:00 to 5:00, and we will be set up in the conference room as normal.
Have any questions for Kristy? Do we have a motion to approve the notice of general election?
The, all the voting at the Expo, is that everybody, all the judges from both parties in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No questions.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to accept the general election for November 6, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Kristy? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Do you need this part here? Does Michelle need to file it first?
Yeah, she can file it first and then just give me the copy. That'll be fine.
You're still up.
Yes. I have the next one on the list as well.
Item number 17. Discuss take action on purchasing new voting machines. And I'm not speaking for Kristy, I believe this is something we have to do before January the 1st, is that correct, or somewhere in that ballpark?
Yes, sir. Heart is no longer going to be supporting the poll books that we use to check in voters on election day or early, during early voting as well. And we have gotten quotes from several other companies that put out poll books, and we have decided to go with Heart, which is their newest poll pads. They're going to be iPads, which the voter is going to be able to sign on the iPad itself. So there will be no more combination forms. It's going to be a whole lot easier for the judges to use, it's very user-friendly, as well as for us, we have more, we'll be able to keep tabs on things from the backside a whole lot easier than we can using our current system. The current first-year price for the total is $7,380 for an upfront cost with the reimbursement from Chapter 19 for $2,480 of that.
And Kristy and Evelina attended a conference or seminar, whatever you want to call it, in Fort Worth, Tarrant County, and looked at many different types, and still came up that you wanted Heart, correct?
Yes, sir. And we had two different machines to be able to look at, and the Heart poll pad was the most easiest to use.
And if they decide to prove it today, and we get them ordered within the next week, we can receive them before September 30th, and it'll come out of this year's budget, correct?
Yes, sir. And we also received the go-ahead to even be able to use these for this coming up election instead of having to use our old systems.
Cool. And the money's not an issue along with the Chapter 19 money, correct?
Correct. As Kristy indicated, Chapter 19 is a reimbursable grant, so we'd have to front the whole $7,380, but we'll get, we'll be reimbursed by the state in their timetable. So I don't expect reimbursement to happen before September 30th.
Right.
But if, we will, it is a guaranteed reimbursement.
Will this purchase be made in this budget here?
Yes, yes. Will not pass fast October 1st, correct?
Correct.
The people that's going to be using this, will they need any training or anything?
Yes, sir. We're doing training before early voting, and we will have it set up and go through step-by-step as to how to check people in, what to look for, and then we'll have them come up as well, and they can demonstrate it and look to see how to put it all together and how to use it.
Be any cost to that?
Any more questions for Kristy? Any concerns for Brian? Well, do I have a motion?
Make a motion we purchase the new voting machines?
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Kristy? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Thank you, Kristy. And thank you, Evelina.
I'm going to pass through.
There you go. Patch through the audience. All right. You're like that airline pilot the other day that brought pizza. Let me catch up while John's out there campaigning. All right. Discuss take action on equipment purchase for the Sheriff's Department. Dwayne, do you want to take front and center?
Yes, sir. Thank you, David.
I think we had discussed this earlier with the court. We'd like to move forward with the purchase of four rifles from Defender Supply for the amount of $2,140 coming out of our SWAT line item.
That's money that's already in your business, right?
Yes, sir. Also, we would like to go ahead and enter into a contract with Acxiom Enterprise, which is for our tasers. That's for five additional tasers, and it's a lease, excuse me, lease-to-buy program. First year is $1,820. The continuing four years after will be $1,400. That also, we'd like to take out of our SWAT line item. That's for the four SRO officers, and then we have one in the jail that has malfunctioned and is no longer working, so that'll replace the one in the jail also. And then also, we would like to discuss the issue with the routers in the cars. Eddie, our IT guy, has gotten a bid together for replacing the hotspots that are in our cars, and the total for doing that is...
$15,000.
$15,138. And we've got the money and unexpendited resources in our 570 line item for this year, and we'd like to move forward with doing that. The reason for that, when we first started CopSync, the previous IT director said that the hotspots, the Verizon jet packs would work, and they work, except whenever we lose connection with cellular service or the Wi-Fi connection inside the car, they drop the connection, and you have to log back in, and that takes some time. With the new system, it's pretty much a live feed system constantly, and if I understand it right, if we use the jet packs, once we lose connection with the cellular towers, then we have to log completely out, log back in, and we'll have to log into the VPN server. So our officers are having enough hard time right now with the jet packs that I don't think that's going to be a viable solution, so...
And I wasn't ignoring your email. Isn't that what you, Brian and I met about, one of the items? That we discussed to go ahead and just take care of it if we had the money to take care of it, and we hadn't decided where the money was coming from? But apparently, we now have decided. So I wasn't ignoring you, but I...
No, that's, that's fine. I knew y'all had been discussing it, so I just wanted to verify that we had the money if the court so chose we could move forward with unexpendited money out of 570.
Okay. I understand you've had the money to do what you want to do this year, but what about, you're talking about the lasers?
Lasers.
Lasers, I mean, next year.
Yes, sir. $1,400, we can take that out of either our uniform or...
The duration of this lease purchase?
I'm sorry?
The length of this?
It's a five-year, this being the first year.
$1,800 first year, $1,400 the next four?
Yes.
$1,820.
$1,820 this year, and $1,400 the next four. Yes, sir.
And I think Larry's concerned is if you've got the $1,400, the next four, is that right, Larry?
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I was asking.
Yes, sir.
We can be on top of that.
We can take that out of, because we do wear it as part of our uniform, we could take it out of our uniform line item.
All reduce the uniform line item by $1,400 and add that down into 570 on the current budget for the additional payments.
And all the money we're discussing about this morning is in the current budget, in Alan and Dwayne's current budget?
Well, certainly, we've got some. I mean, their 570 balance as of the end of the month was $9,900, so towards this $15,000, we'll have to, I mean, I'm sure they've got some ideas where to go.
We've got some extra in gas and oil, and also, I've got them marked here. We've got the money, we've got it in gas and oil, prisoner food expense, and auto repair.
The important thing is that we need to make sure that that comp time, because that is the only thing that I'm worried about.
Yes, sir. And I've already, we're on top of all of our people, they're taking vacation time and getting all that brought down. I've told them it has to be at or as close to zero as reasonably possible.
That's your only thing hanging out there that we're...
Everyone knows in the department that that is a major concern.
Well, those had to be taken by the end of this week, really. Four pages. I know that the 15th was their deadline to take it, wasn't it?
They got to get it knocked out by next...
Short period of time, a lot of hours.
But we can, one day. Kristy left too early, I need to talk to Kristy, too.
I think the, we had one officer that had 80 hours, and he's taken the last two weeks off to clear his 80-hours comp time.
I'll make a motion.
All right. I have a motion by Larry to let the Sheriff's Department pursue forward with the current budget expenditures. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by John. Do we have any further questions at all for Dwayne or Brian? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against.
Thank you all very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dwayne. Item number 19. Discuss take action on modification of lease agreement on ancillary parking area for the Expo Center. I believe that's back to you, Brian.
Yes, sir. If you remember earlier in the year, we executed a lease for some ancillary parking at the Expo Center that incorporated, I always do this upside down, forgive me, three tracks. Track one being right here, that runs behind all the shopping center and everything in fronts to the Expo Center. Track two, which was this alley that was in between the hotel and Century 21, and then track three, which is right here that connects between the old United Co-op building and the shopping center. Since that lease is executed, track two, this little alley, has been sold, and so we're requesting modification of the lease to simply delete or drop track two from the lease so that the new owner, who is Hank Jones, will not, his property won't be encumbered by a lease that's actually on record. So it's just this little alley right here. Track two, right here.
Make a motion that we accept the removal of track two from the ancillary parking.
And has the lease already been modified?
No, sir. I'll prepare that document, so basically, just once the attorney is, is okay with it, to authorize the judge to execute.
And authorize the judge to execute the agreement upon completion by the county attorney.
I have a motion by John. A second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Brian or Andy?
Yeah, James, I think I'll be a reject on the grant.
Dollar to 75 cents?
It was a dollar a year, so, yeah.
So how much does that calculate? So now we're going to 88 cents?
It'd probably be closer to 92 cents, but since I never received the dollar, I guess it's, it's okay.
All right. I have a motion by John and a second by Kenneth. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Item number 20. Approved budget transfers.
Sent those to you Friday evening.
Hold this, Mark.
Sent those to you Friday evening, and as in my comments with the email, as they're getting closer to the end of the year, they're getting downright ugly.
They are.
And so, you know, obviously, the biggest one was the charge to contingency and also the capital improvements to come up with the $98,500 that needed to go into additional subsidy to the Expo Center. Everything else is pretty much within their departments, just grabbing dollars and reallocating them to line items that needed it so that our budget can remain in compliance.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion for Brian?
Do we sign one of these, or...
I've got the copy through, so...
All in favor of said motion? That's five for, I'm assuming, and zero against. Thank you. Item number 21. Approved remainder of county bills.
The grand total, I've sent you the payment request reports, the grand total being $426,905.29. In addition, there were two that were reimbursed through payroll for all the job needs. Thomas Cophran for $22.54, and Tanya Livingston for $12.72.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth to pay our bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion? That's five for, zero against. Approved county treasury report.
I saw that today, didn't I? Can't even see it. We haven't seen it yet. You got to bring it up here.
We got to sign it. Look at it.
Thank you, Nicky.
Do you solemn swear that power of blessing you use is correct? And I can, I'm just checking with you.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasury report.
Judge, you have a second. All right. All right. I don't see any zeros. That's always a good thing. I have a motion by Kenneth and I have a second by Don. I'll wait for y'all to actually get a chance to look at that before we actually try to move forward on that.
Okay.
Both of y'all.
Give them a grant.
All right. All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Item number twenty-three, approve and accept monthly reports from county departments.
Yes. Need a motion?
I have a motion by Larry to accept the monthly reports.
Second.
Have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor of said motion?
Uh, we don't, I don't see...
Wait a minute.
I don't see the road maintenance report on here that he did on roads.
Well, but this is a monthly.
Would it turn in with this for us to approve his report?
Well, this is monthly. And his is not monthly.
Just a question.
Up to you, boys, gentlemen, men. Any further discussion?
I think it maybe needs a separate line item.
Okay. If you remind me or Pat next month, we can add that to it?
Well, there's two questions here. Actually, there's an annual report on proposed road conditions, you know? And rating your roads. And we do it A, B, or C. And then C's needing repair. And you have to identify what needs to be done to those roads, okay? And that's an annual report. If we want a monthly report, then I, I don't think we've ever had a monthly report.
No, I think that just coming directly to the Commissioners that they want to report.
We'll have to...
On a monthly.
Request, we have to request the monthly one.
He did when he had us design our individual reports for the yearly, the annual reports as required. And I thought it would probably come before this court approved.
Well, I didn't sign mine because he had not completed it.
He had completed mine.
I think what, where it reads is we request, we have to request if we want a monthly one. But he's required to turn in a year of it.
And historically, we have not had a monthly report from Ribbon Bridge. But if you want one, we can.
Now, I go say to y'all, if you want one, then make him aware of it and make Pat aware of it if you want it on a separate line item or if you want it included with the... You just have to let Pat know how you want to handle it and let Brady know that you want to do it.
Well, the report I'm talking about is the annual report is required to do on all precinct roads.
Okay.
That would be a separate line item.
And he did take it to Pat. And there was supposed to be a discussion with you to whether we had line item part or was including the...
Cool.
I guess there wasn't a discussion with me.
After he asked his question.
I guess there wasn't a discussion with me.
The, that, I may have messed that up.
Good. So they're gonna take blame for it. I don't know what the hell we're talking about.
No. He showed me my report. It wasn't complete. I told him to complete it. And if you had any C items on your report and there was no verbiage as to what needed to be done, he probably took them back to complete it.
Whatever. That's the only reason I asked that question. But I led him believing it was going to be on this court. Who led you?
Wasn't me.
No.
But...
No. It's all my...
That should be an annual report.
I don't care who it was, as long as it wasn't me. All right. Well, now you can take a vote on approving them. Do I have a motion to accept the monthly report?
You already got that.
Do I, do I have a second? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's five, four, zero against. Angie, since I screwed this up and didn't put the, and I'll take credit for this one, didn't put to accept the RFPs, I add an addendum. Should I adjourn out of this?
Yes.
And then open this up?
Well, let me see.
And that was strictly my fault there. I just...
You can go directly to the addendum before we...
Adjourn?
Yeah.
All right. All right. So if we're done with monthly reports, let's go to discuss take action on receiving RFPs for concessionary contract?
Yes, we received two that were timely, timely submitted. The first one is from... Entity name, stand by. Taylor's Turn and Burn, KFAN. And the second one being from Los Pramos. One of the bidders actually made envelopes for your personal consumption. However, that being inappropriate, I've asked the county attorney to take possession until after the award is made. And then they'll hand those mail items to you guys. Our recommendation is that we just simply receive and come back at a later time for awarding.
Right now, I've got it on Thursdays. I've got to have our second tax hearing and then go into Commissioners Court to discuss and take action on that. Give you time to review them, give you time to discuss if you have questions with whoever.
Absolutely.
All right.
There was a mandatory meeting as specified in the bid.
Yes, sir. And there was a legitimate reason why that other bidder...
Was the director of the Expo notified of the legitimate reason?
Nothing I'm aware of, no.
Should he not have been since he was conducting the...
Actually, the auditor was conducting the meeting. The manager of the Expo was invited to attend.
The manner...
In the bid proposal, the auditor's office had the meeting and the Expo...
Did you conduct the meeting?
No, because there was nobody that had confirmed they were going to be in attendance. So I, I did not go on that day. I found out that one bidder did attend. So that, that part, and the bidder that did attend is the current bidder. So there was no really new information that was shared that was really going to be detrimental.
Why does there seem to be a disconnect between the director of the Expo and the auditor's office on bringing these things together?
I do not know.
Then I want you to find that out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept these RFPs?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Anything else before you make your motion?
I make motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion by Kenneth to adjourn.
Judge, you have a second.
I have a second by Don. All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against at 10:47 a.m. And we'll meet again Thursday morning. And we'll meet again Monday morning.
I think you adjourned the meeting. You gonna have another one come out for that?
Yes, for the hearing. Yes, for the hearing. And she just posted that this morning. You'll see another one. And Brian, on your question earlier today, Larry has made mention of, do we really need workshop? What I'm thinking about Monday, when we have the special hearing for Michelle. If you have anything else that you and I need to present to the court, let us know before Thursday. And we'll have like a workshop, a final workshop. I've only got two things I need to probably talk to you about. That's how we're going to allocate the hot tags and how we're going to allocate the library. I trust. Okay. We could just do that as Monday, Saturday's good with you? And if we get it cleaned up that day, then we can put it to bed on... Hey, Mary. Put it to bed. We got a lot of it.
Plus, remember, we're also going to try to push the meeting on the 29th to clear out our panels.
You had to remind me of that one. We're gonna have a lot of meetings this month. Still like City Council?
You got any more?
I don't think so. Michelle may have one. That was grueling. That was grueling. Hey, Madeline, how you been doing?
Where'd you get them in the city? Senior city?
I need to do that more than anybody. Darlene reminds me quite often. Yeah. I don't know, is that it? And as far as I'm concerned, that's it.
Yeah, we got them all.
If Michelle's done with y'all. Thank you, Larry.